Warren.
Hastings.
Here.
Lynch.
Here.
Ward.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
This time I'll entertain a motion of second to approve the agenda as presented.
Can I make a motion?
Is that okay?
In the discussion, the last two is resolution, the last two resolutions, they're just require a motion of second, so they won't be resolution, that's why it's not in the packet. Any other discussion? I'll ask for a vote for approval.
Hastings.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Pistol.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Also, at this time, I'd like to approve, motion of second to approve the minutes for October thirteenth, regular meeting, land discussion on the eighteenth for the fire department and the October twenty-seventh budgets, wish list meetings. Motion of second for approval.
Make motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Also, the financials. I'll ask for a vote.
Hastings.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Pistol.
Yeah.
Ward.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Brings us to department head reports. Airport commission, I have no one here representing the airport, not a lot going on. I do have, and I'll probably try to fill these at the next meeting, I have one open for the airport commission. I've had three names submitted, Jeannie Stone, Bob Watson, and Dan Hugh. I'll be talking to them all next week, and if you have anyone you wish to add to that, or any questions concerning that, just let me know, and we'll probably fill that position maybe at the next meeting. If you want to sit in on it, or talk to him, feel free to do that. That's all I have on the airport. Animal control, just talking to Will earlier, our pump's in. Once he gets up there, he's already done a one call on our pump and our water, it'll take about a day to, it'll take a day to actually get it in, the water, and then we'll like, probably a couple of weeks if we get on it, we've been tied up with other things. I'd like to get that done, obviously, by, before the end of December, and get it ready for, and then we'll just have to meet the three of us that are on that committee, or the three of y'all plus me, to decide on our days. Also, been interviewing some folks for a position of manager of that, I'll give you an update on that when we meet, and maybe set in on, you know, top three recommendations, and we'll pick them, and then we'll kind of interview them, and then decide. That's all I have on that. Well, that's, of course, aside, the days we're going to keep, we talked about that. Fire department report, Chief D.L. West.
Been real busy this month. We have small grass fire just south of town, across from the water tank, it's hot though, wasn't really bad. We did finish up the hose test that we needed done on the last truck, we got it accomplished. We had a multi-car accident over here in front of tractor supply, there was entrapment, we did use the jaws to help get them out. Had a residential alarm going off, went doing a check on it, mom wasn't home, daughter was, and we got the call, just go check and make sure everything was okay. Had a carbon monoxide leak called at a house, young couple with a baby, they were concerned, and we all showed up and put them at peace. Had Scarellon Square, it was real good, I'm guessing twenty-five to twenty-seven hundred people, I want to thank everybody that was involved, but I think I counted thirty-eight different individuals and businesses passing out candy that night. So, a lot more people were coming to help do that, and I appreciate every one of them for it. Appreciate Charles and his crew for the haunted house that they put on at the last minute for us, with the way Halloween fell, it kind of made it tough on everybody, but Charles and his crew came through great. We had a car wreck up at the doctor's building up in front of the hospital, young lady hit the gas instead of the brake, there's now a tree that's got a little scar on it. Also, we had a grass fire on old Highway nine, contained to a backyard, nothing got hurt there. We've had a, during the storm the other night, we had somebody call in saying that they saw a fireball, thought maybe it was a power line or transformer blow, but it was not, it was somebody burning their brush pile during the grass, I believe, or during that rain, so that would have been the time to do it, and thankfully, we've got some good rain. Then later that night, about three o'clock on a Saturday morning, we get a call of a tree down on a house. Went checked everything out, everything was fine, everybody was okay, gave them the phone number of somebody that could cut it off their house for them, best I could tell. Let's see, I'm trying to scroll through all this, had a alarm at Lefler Estates yesterday, day before yesterday, no, it was yesterday.
Last night.
It was the last night. Somebody burned their chicken, I could tell as soon as I walked in, it was either chicken or shrimp, and it was chicken. We worked the ballgame tonight, and the rest of the fire department's up there right now, helping out with the basketball game at the arena, working the auditorium. Tomorrow morning, I plan on getting up early and getting a ladder truck out to hang a flag up for Veterans Day, so remember our veterans. If there's any questions I can answer, I'll be glad to try to answer them.
All I have, yeah, good job Scarellon Square. Anything else for the chief? Thank you, D.L., brings us to Parks and Street Department, Charles Wilson.
Don't have a whole lot going on, finally got the pump and pond running again, so filling the pond back up, it went through a pretty good dry spell, but finally got enough water to get it fired up. They're practicing softball off and on, so we'll have to keep an eye on it and go down and try to keep fields cleaned up for them. Street department, worked on old number nine, started pushing some of it back, and I guess I'm fixing to be busy trying to get a few lights up, get ready for this lighting thing in a couple of weeks, so wish it me luck.
Which is December the third, right?
Yes, so, wish me luck.
Yeah, that's completely, I just wrote December third, not much time, might need some volunteers on the weekend, you know.
And I fixed the bucket truck where it's got lights, it's got a hundred and ten volts, you can plug up a light up by the boom and all that stuff, so you can actually work in the dark a little. I'm hoping I don't have to, but if I need to, probably will.
Do you know if you're going to get the light for the house up this year, or not?
Dale bought some lights and brought them in, and he was looking for some more, so it'll be entirely up to how many strands of lights he's getting, and...
He's got a pretty good plan on one of them.
Yeah, I got the cable all up, and, yeah, we're, I mean, we're going to light up at least what we done last year, I hope, and everybody will start pulling together, so we'll see how it works. I've got a couple of trees already up.
I have under Parks, Glen Stad, we did get a check for fifteen thousand dollars for that netting, so maybe next week, I'd like for, you know, Jason and Billy to walk down there and review, of course, kind of get a game plan on hard cover the bleachers and just find out where we need to put the poles and run the cables, so we can go ahead and get that netting. And I think the way you had it figured out, Jason, you know, find a way to, you know, cover the bleachers with tin or something, but it comes down to running a lot.
Yeah, I've talked to, I talked to one construction guy, and he's supposed to be getting with some, you know, subcontractors that do like the metal building, stuff like we need.
Well, definitely, we're in-house, we can do the poles and cables, and what, I mean...
I think everything outside of the building, I think everything's already there.
Yeah, well, yeah, that fifteen is la la, that was a max of that grant, she got it, so we're happy about that. Okay, we didn't mean to cut you off.
You're good.
And Dale done hit on it, great job on the spook house, it was in the haunted hayride.
Thank you.
Pretty scary, so, anything else for Charles? Thank you, brings us to police department, Chief Jay Murloff, your report.
Last month was pretty busy on the highway, we had thirteen accidents on the roadway, and they, those were all, ten of those thirteen were all on sixty-five, so we just have people to try to be still more cognizant of their fellow travelers, so we're not hitting each other. On animal control, three calls, none of them needed to be picked up. I filled out two open positions that we had, and one is Derek Sanford, we brought him back, he's working night shift, and he's also training our other new employee. We hired Andreas Vance, some of y'all may know her from Walmart, she came in with us with, is a part-time officer, really liked it, so when the job came in, she applied for and got it, and thinks she's going to be great. That car that we bought, I don't know, like, February, is finally in outfitted, rolling around that Explorer, so, I don't know, it took nine months, eight months, so if you see a little Explorer with our stripes on it, that's, that's us, it's not the county. And I think it looks really good, the, the people that put it together for us did a really good job. Last thing I've got, Detective, Detective Baker, my new detective, Tim Baker, was awarded the position as twenty-twenty-two Attorney General's Law Enforcement Officer of the Year for Vabre County, so...
Yeah. That's true.
And I think, I can't remember the exact date, but sometime in December is when we had the luncheon, so that's when he'll get presented his award with the Attorney General. So, he did a lot of great things for his community. When I sent him in for it, it was for a lot of his public service work that he's been doing, he does a lot of stuff behind the scenes, it's not law enforcement, he hands out toys, mentors youth, so he's doing a real good job, so if you guys see him, just congratulate him, he, he's a good egg. Other than that, if anybody's got any questions?
Anything for the chief? I appreciate you nominating people, because you've got a good, good, good group going, so we're proud of you, thank you. Brings us down to Water and Sewer Department, Will Hinch.
All right, water loss this month, or this past month for Clinton was twenty-eight percent, burnt ridge was sixteen percent, and then ours was fourteen percent on the water loss. Chemical cost was down to nine cents per thousand, and I really don't have any updates on reports or anything, or projects. We have put in for the ARPA grants on three different projects. One project is for the Archie crossing over here with the sewer line, the, and then we had the repairing the, or replacing the old lines up on School Hill and stuff, the A.C. lines, and then we also did the sewer infiltration, replacing the sewer lines and the man-hose, so those are the three things we've applied for, for the ARPA money, so we'll see how that goes. I have heard a few rumors about the ARPA money, that since there's such a tight guideline on getting the projects and everything awarded, that some of that money's going to go towards reimbursing some of the projects that's already been done, and some of the small towns and stuff, so we'll, we'll see what comes about on that. One thing I did, and I'm sorry it wasn't on the agenda, it's kind of a spur of the moment deal, Bee Branch Water is kind of struggling on staff and vehicles. They were really struggling on staff, but now they're really struggling on the vehicles, they don't have any that are running right now. And we have five vehicles parked there behind the trailer that we're not using right now, we're planning on putting up for auction, we just haven't. And this week, they come down, I jump-started them all, got them running, sat there and idled, we, I drove the boy from Bee Branch around on each one of them, and the one that's running the best is, it's not the greatest vehicle in the world, but we bought it new, it's a two thousand twenty-two, or it's two thousand two model, and we bought it two thousand thirty, we bought it for seventeen thousand dollars, and we depreciated it out in our books, so they were willing to pay for it, but it's not worth a whole lot, so I did talk to municipal league, and they said that within, we were legal to sell that to them for a dollar, and it would benefit the community and county, so if you guys would approve that.
It gives a lot of business, don't they?
Oh, yes, they're, they represent a little over one-third of our sales, so...
Okay, and if I just looked at, Chad's looked at it, Dana, so I entertain a motion of second to sell this vehicle for dollars to Bee Branch, one of them.
Second.
Any other discussion? I'll call for a vote.
Hastings.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Pistol.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Thank you, guys, unless you...
Do they have a backhoe now?
They do have a backhoe, and they were actually, had a little accident with their, their pull truck this last week, and that was Cascadia, by the way, I remember the name of that road they were pulling, but the backhoe never, it wasn't damaged, their trailer's out of commission, and their pull truck's out of commission, but, and we don't have any way of helping them with that, I told them if emergency situation, we could probably transfer them around, or something like that, but they're looking at maybe doing some contract labor out there to fix leaks and stuff right now. They're down to one employee, and they're struggling, so if you guys know anybody that's looking to get into the water business, or is in the water business, looking for a management position, they have one open.
Yeah, that'd be, okay, that's what I had, the truck, the last minute ago, and then the, that's what I, well, I had, anything else for Will Hinch?
We've been talking about the tenure plan for a while, and you gave us the list last year of things that needed to be done, and we started on any of that yet.
We don't have any funds for any of that right now. Yes, now, we do have, we talked a couple of months ago, I give you the amount that we have in-house that we could spend on projects, if you had, now that you asked me, I might be able to find it here, but I doubt it, but we have somewhere...
It's in the minutes from last night.
Yeah, we'll look back, okay, so I don't want to misspeak on what we have in there, but we have so much in the construction fund, and we have so much in depreciation fund, that we could go towards projects, so that's something that if you guys would like to spend a little bit more time on, and maybe nitpick and pick which project we want to start, I'm kind of waiting to see how this CADM study goes, which we are going to start hopefully next week. We did rent some samplers for our CADM study, this study's going to end up costing us a little over thirty thousand dollars, but if it proves that we don't have a CADM problem, it might save us millions, so that project's going to start next week, and it's a six-week testing period, so it's supposed to start up next week, so you will see, you know, I'll kind of keep you updated and everything, so...
Well, some of that is, wait to see if you get these grants.
Yes, definitely, and everybody needs to understand that these grants are only, I think, they're, are they twenty-eighty, I think is all we, I think we only, I think we only qualify for twenty percent grant, and eighty will be...
Ours.
Yeah, eighty will be ours, but with that, it'll be an A and R C loan, it won't be a bond loan, it'll be lower interest, two point five, maybe is what I heard.
Everybody's kind of wary of the bond right now, I mean, everyone...
If we take out a bond right now, we're going to be spending close to five percent, is what we're going to get.
Like I said, end of the year, first of the year, it'd be a good time to sit down and do a workshop with the ones on the water, and just...
Yes, but I definitely do want, we do have some money put away in construction fund, and we do have some, I mean, and we can actually do some projects, I want to do some projects.
I like the three you mentioned, you know, that's one, infiltration, the pipes on the hill, and the...
Says one point five in the construction account, and overall, two point two million that they can use for projects.
That's what was, yeah. Anything else for Will?
Well, I just have one question, so, over here, right, just, you know, I asked you about if there was a water leak right there.
I wish it was.
We didn't know, no clue yet?
No, we've, we tested fluoride, there's no fluoride in the water, there's no chlorine in that, I wish that spring was on my farm.
Yeah, I mean, alls, I mean, that's, never went dry all summer, that ditch right there has water in it.
Tell me where we cut the hay?
No, right here, when you, when you make the curve, you get on the road, and you make that curve, this side of the, the little deal that goes into the gate, all the way down, it's, it's got water in it, running all the time.
This is where y'all be here four years, and I'm trying to make that into a leak every year. There's, there's two lines that feed this area here, and they're both valve-off right over here on sixteen, and we've ran the valves, we've actually, the, we've actually left them off for a day, you know, and just seen if anything, and we've not got a spiegel built on that. Now, we did fix a small leak here at the airport, and we were like, well, maybe that was what it was, and it wasn't, it's still flowing.
Now, the other day, it was about to rain, it was a Saturday, and it was going to rain later, I think it was a Saturday, and there was, I mean, down sixty from Anderson Road, was that a leak?
That was a leak, yes, sir.
You were right, that was a big one.
That was a big one, I just...
We've had several big ones earlier, so...
Okay, anything else for Will? Thank you, you need to get out of here, or...
I'll stick around for a little bit, in this case, if any questions from the public in the back.
Comes down to the zoning department, or Phil Park.
We've got, I guess, four larger projects going on right now, the first service bank we monitor, well into that, also the backup nine-one-one call center, it's ongoing, has to annex, the vet clinic on the other end of the building from the new Mexican restaurant, they're doing an addition there for more enclosed kennels for animals that they're working on, also the river company up on the hill, Eric Moix is doing an addition on to the back of their building, smaller stuff, we got a house going up on Walker Street, and an addition to a home on Fraser, a new storage building on Main Street, possibly an addition, I was up there with the contractor today, on, doing a small addition on a house on Lee Street. I've got some calls on that old bus station on Highway sixty-five B, people have been asking what's going on there, they've had sawhorses out there and trim laid out everywhere. What it is, the, the guy that owns the building is using it as kind of a holding station, he'll put his trim out there, he'll stain it, he'll urethane it, he'll stick it back in the building, basically let the stink get off of it, and then he'll take it and use it on whatever home he's working on. So, he's not doing anything inside that building, he's just using it to, you know, let his stuff dry after he urethanes it, so that's all I got.
What kind of storage building on Main?
What kind?
Yeah, you talking about that thing, their building next to the park?
Yeah, yeah.
Looks like it's going to have a porch on it.
It's got a, it's got a lane to on it, I think he's going to park a Jeep or something under it.
Anything else on zoning? Thank you, brings us down to unfinished business ordinance, levying of the millage at second and third reading, this is for leaving our millage at two point nine. I entertain a motion of second to put this on a second and third reading, by title only.
Second.
Second, any discussion? This is the second and third reading, and I have to get, I think we have to complete it by the next quorum court meeting, which is next week, and our millage on that, it's an ordinance levying a two point nine mill real and personal property tax for general operations of the city of Clinton, Arkansas, and for other purposes. Any other discussion? A call for, if not, a call for a vote?
Hastings.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Pistol.
No.
Ward.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Two point nine real and personal property for general operations for city of Clinton, Arkansas, for other purposes. At this point, I'll entertain a motion of seconds to adopt the ordinance.
Make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? I'll ask for a vote.
Hastings.
You want to ask for what? This is the pass it, ask your question, you were asking Chad.
No, I was trying to...
Any discussion?
Question, I was, we, we talked last month about our earmarking some of this, you know, the money that comes in, so I was just trying to figure out if we thought about that anymore, or done that, or not, or left it alone.
No, you can, I'm, I'm for leaving at two point nine, if you want...
No, no, I was just saying, you know, the amount of it, instead of dropping it out, earmarking it for something else for the future, you know.
I wouldn't have a problem with that, we can bring that up there in the budget.
I think, I mean, you know, I can do that, but I think, you can't do that until you finish the budget to take it.
Yeah, yeah, it's still above, I just, yeah, that's what I was sitting, thinking about, so, okay, we're good.
And when you do, you're going to have to take it out of everybody's budget, because it's in everybody's budget right now.
Yes.
Let's go ahead and complete the vote, I call for a vote.
Hastings.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Pistol.
No.
Ward.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Just going on, send a motion second, suspend the rules and adopt the emergency clause.
There's no emergency clause on it.
What's that?
There's no emergency clause on it.
So, we have adopted it, I guess it'll go, all right.
Because it will go through, it won't be till like next year anyway, when they start, it's from next year, so it won't be in the thirty days.
As long as you pass it, and then send it on to the, to the county.
Good deal, thank you, brings us down to the...
Hold on, the number's twenty-twenty-two dash oh five.
Brings us down to, new business, a resolution, purchase fire station property, this is a resolution on read this, a resolution designating and authorizing the mayor and the corridor executor to execute a contract for the purchase of real property, whereas the city of Clinton, Arkansas, is in need of property to locate a new fire station, whereas Green Bay Packaging Incorporated has offered for sale certain property that would be appropriate for the location of said fire station, and whereas the city of Green Bay, it's where the city and Green Bay have negotiated and offered an acceptance, and this resolution is necessary to authorize the mayor and the corridor to execute a binding contract pursuant to Arkansas Code fourteen fifty-four dash three oh two B, now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Clinton, Arkansas, section one, that the mayor and corridor are hereby authorized and directed to execute the offer and acceptance attached to this resolution. Entertainer motion of second to...
Make a motion. Is that okay?
Any discussion, questions? I'll ask for a vote.
Hastings.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Pistol.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Twenty-twenty-two dash seventeen.
This next is, it's not a resolution, motion second, it's on your agenda, this regard is in reference to the employee bonus and ARPA revenue replacement fund, I talked to Chad, I let him talk about this today, for the amount, I think we'll meet next week on, for the firefighters or volunteer, or a question that came up, are they, what was the amount going to be, were they included in bonuses, we're trying to match the counting, what they did, I think full-time was two thousand, and part-time was a thousand, been some discussion with the chief about amount for the volunteer firefighters, and we gathered that, I think we have to have an ordinance, I'll let the city attorney explain that, and we can probably do all this next week at a special meeting.
Yeah, we can do a, you can do my resolution, I'll have to do an ordinance, I talked to attorney from municipal league about it, and we're going to put something together, I'll have something together for you probably early next week, and then a couple of days after that. The key thing is, it just, you just have to watch, the amount of the bonus needs to be a reasonable amount, and it's not necessarily that you're tied on what you do right now, but in the future, when you apply for grants and things like that, if you're ever audited, it might, it might look negatively if you, if you're giving too large of a bonus, it just, they might not approve for grants in the future if your bonuses are too large. So, that was the only kind of caution that they gave me with regards to it, so I don't, I don't know if any of the numbers that you're throwing out there right now are unreasonable, and they just need to be proportional to what, you know, so if you have new employees, you don't need to give a new employee the same bonus that employee that's been present for the entire year, the same thing, you probably need to do some sort of reduction, so, you know, someone's been on, on the job for two months instead of the full year, you might need to do some sort of reduction based on that, but, but I'll have a resolution ready for you kind of early, early next week.
We can do a special meeting, we can decide that between now and then, what's appropriate, is it, and like I say, as far as knocking us out, applying for grants, I wonder if the fact that it was, that ARPA money, if it was, if that would weigh into it a one-time deal, but if it's something that we can't, feel like we can't afford, that's, that's fine, and I...
Yeah, and I don't, I don't want to scare you into not doing this, because, but that was just sort of a caution, that was sort of a standard that you need to follow, it's just that needs to be reasonable improvement, and that was just kind of the guidance I got from the grant council at municipal league, again, I don't, I'm not overly concerned with the numbers that I've heard so far, so...
Okay. Does that affect anything between employee bonus and employee Christmas bonus?
No, I mean, it'd be two separate things, if you did, if you did one based on this ARPA money that you've got, and you do your traditional Christmas bonus.
That would be, what we're talking on that, I, I think the Christmas bonus we do every year is we'd figure a net, certain amount, this would, talk to Deana, she'd agree, she'd recommend, be gross, whatever amount we decide would be gross, as opposed to trying to figure a net on that, that would be extremely time-consuming, and I think everybody'd be happy with gross on that, we can decide on the amounts next week when we sit down and Brings us to the last thing, the employee Christmas bonus, it's already been brought up, I would entertain a motion of second, we don't have to have a resolution, but we usually do a hundred and fifty dollars for this next paid period, Deana likes to get it out by Thanksgiving, a hundred and fifty for full-time, seventy-five for part-time, and department heads can dictate, you know, if there's a new hire, if it's part-time or full-time on that, that's... Hundred and fifty for full-time, seventy-five for part-time, the department heads can dictate, you know, if there's a new hire, if it's part-time or full-time or that, that's... I'll entertain a motion of second to approve that, like we do every year.
And that's net, correct?
What's that?
Net.
Net, yeah, a hundred and fifty net, I just...
So moved.
Second, any other discussion?
What do you mean a hundred and fifty net?
Well, you'll get a hundred and fifty dollars take home, so, you know, you may get a two hundred and twelve dollar bonus, but Tom taxes.
Why do you figure the taxes on people that are holding out more or less?
Do what now?
Don't some people hold out more?
Yeah, you gotta go in there and each one.
Individually, yeah.
So some people will get paid more?
Yeah.
They'll get paid the exact amount.
Same.
Yeah, yeah, stay with them.
They'll pay home a hundred and fifty, and Deana and in my office, Donna, will sit there and figure out what we should have paid.
But some people are gonna have a higher gross pay.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, I don't know if I like that or not.
They'll never see it.
I know about it, so I can figure, other people will figure it out, yeah.
Can we call it an Arba Christmas bonus? That's a, that's... The downfall, the downfall in it is you, some people is gonna get a hundred and fifty or two hundred dollars, but a lot of others are gonna get fifty dollars. If you started at a hundred and fifty, they, they're never gonna get that hundred and fifty.
But if you just do a gross, then, then their taxes get held out, and that's...
What we're trying to say, I mean, you know, it'd be...
That's a more fair system.
Two fifty, and then Jason got two hundred, I got two twenty. I mean, it's always gonna be a different price, unless you did net.
I knew you was having a fight. Any other discussion?
I mean, there's no way to change it.
Well, yeah, you can do it gross. The net pay, that, I mean, that's their, their tax bracket or whatever tax they're in, it's not, why, why would somebody get, why would it be fair for everybody to get the same net pay? And when you figure it back, the gross pay is higher on some than it is others, and everybody, they're not getting the same bonus.
I think it was pretty tight when we came up with that, I think, I may be making this up, but it's pretty tight, we just wanted people to get a hundred and fifty, can't just give them a hundred and fifty cash like it, but, so that's how we came up with it, seemed to work, okay? But to, to your point, no, it's not the same, but I'm, I'm, I'm...
If you give everybody a hundred, or if you give everybody a two hundred dollar gross bonus, then everybody's getting it. Their net might be different, but that's, because that's their, whatever they're withholding on their taxes or whatever.
Yeah, it's gonna be different, and there's no way to change that.
That looks to me like that.
One way or the other, it's gonna be different, though.
Yeah.
I'm just gonna leave it at, I'm just gonna put the fourth net, and we'll, any other discussion on that? Uh, ask for a vote.
Hastings?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Pistol?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Uh, brings us down to public comments, any, or including council comments. Brings us to mayor comments, uh, give you the update on animal control, Baroja and Roger Street, I think's, seems to be going pretty good, the signs are up, and maybe that's run its course, somebody put a little cold patch on that hole that some department left there, I think it got fixed a little bit, thank you for that. Uh, budget dates, uh, being, I'll just talk to you individually this coming week about when we'll do that, we'll probably go into early December on that, looks like that, uh, for our budget, may go a little later than it has in the past. Uh, Christmas in Clinton is, is, uh, we'll go into it in December, December the third, it's really pushing Charles and Al, and the, and everybody else, so seriously, if you do wanna come down and volunteer some stuff, or help some of these folks in the storefronts that wanna do something that's not able to do it, or if you wanted to buy some lights and just, you know, put it on there, that never hurts.
Is, is there gonna be a parade this year?
Uh, the, I was getting to that, uh, not that, not that I know, I don't know what, what the O's are doing over there at their place, but as far as I know, the city's not planning one, but the twenty-sixth is the motorcycle toy giveaway, and I think that's on a Saturday around now, that's...
Yeah, it starts at the kitty park.
Yeah. Uh, we mentioned Bee Branch, uh, in need of some help, and I'll reiterate that, if anybody wants to, knows of somebody that's like, you know, help with the water department, I think pay'd be good, be a good career, you know, talk to Bee Branch Water, David Hess is on that board, there's several of them on there, or you can even contact, uh, city of Clinton, we'll put you in touch with them. Scare on the square, you mentioned it was great, uh, Linda Williams, who sold the land of the fairgrounds and done a whole lot of things for the plant community, passed away, is a great guy, and Herbie Prouse and Buster Bramlett and Linda Williams are very good friends, and they're all cut out of the same cloth, and they're very good people, and he's, uh, he represents the best of, of, uh, our community, so... I remember the family of him, I mentioned the motorcycle parade on the twenty-sixth. Oh, Arkadelphia tomorrow night, Yellow Jack's playing, I think the Badgers, so go down there and support the Jackets, and I've mentioned about the chief. Way up, Veterans Day tomorrow, a lot of veterans, uh, around, get around and say thanks, I know Jay Murdock's a veteran, so thank you for everything. That's all I have, uh, have a great Thanksgiving, and, uh, nothing else, I entertain a motion second to the general.
Motion, either?
Second.